All right, we'll call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bond, Crooks, Benedetti, Kama Waden.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Perugia.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rozepa.
Here.
Coram Presse and Mayor Rozepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We could get a motion to excuse.
So moved.
Councilwoman Bond, Crooks, and Councilman Benedetti.
For.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, first we have minute approval for the January ninth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
So moved.
For.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, next, after that, we have a presentation from Redhead Studio on our city branding initiatives. If we could get a motion to make this a part of the regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All right, thank you guys very much for coming down. We appreciate it, and we'll let you take it from here, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Denise Donahue. I'm the Count Services Director at Redhead. And thanks for having us tonight to be able to walk you through what we've been working on with your folks. So just a little kind of, you know, how we got here. Obviously, we were brought in to do a rebrand, at which point we met with the committee and generated our creative brief. And with a little bit of massaging and feedback, we came up with our final direction and approval of the creative brief. From there, we developed the brand platform with a few different logo variations, of which we had a, some adjustment in, in color discussions and then moved on to our final unanimously approved brand platform, which was super exciting. You guys have been amazing to work with. So what we have today is just kind of do a review of where we landed, where the approval's been so far of the brand platform and of the visuals that accompany that. So I'll let Jen take over from here and go through.
Sounds great. And my name is Jen Estle. I'm the Principal and Creative Director at Redhead. Again, thank you for your time. Denise pointed, mentioned it, but it was a great process with an excellent committee that was very productive, and we were just very pleased to get us this far. I'm going to go through this presentation incredibly fast. I know you've all had it in advance, so you could take a look at it. So I'll sort of gloss over some things, but if anyone has a question, feel free to pop out. I just want to respect your time and that there's an agenda after us, so we will try to be efficient. We always start talking about what a brand is. I want, I just want to take the quick moment that a brand is not just a logo. People think of a logo very often, of course, and that is important, but it's so much more. It's everything from how you talk about yourself to what people say about you when you're not in the room, to how you look next to your competition. There's all kinds of things there. So we have what we call the brand platform, which is the words that go along with describing Trenton and what Trenton is about. And then the visual brand, which is the logo, a color palette, typography, usage, those kinds of things. So what we're going to show you is all of the above. Our task really was to codify the Trenton brand through all departments and organizations, and you are not alone in the fact that you have many different organizations. Some, some do their own thing, and some have a volunteer over here or an idea over there, and that is all very well and good, but when you are trying to ensure that you remain relevant to all of your audiences over the course of time, consistency does help, particularly in today's world. We want to inspire people to participate in their community. We want to inspire people to come down and visit this community and really love Trenton and have good, warm feelings about it. With that, we're going to talk, talk quickly about brand voice and target audiences. Again, you folks have read all of this, but we were looking for people who really want to spend their time in Trenton and get them here. Current residents, business owners, visitors, is the long short of it. And we really talked about what that means with the committee and who those folks are and tried to understand where people thought Trenton was and where they thought Trenton should be. And really across all audiences, we know that people share a similar trait. They're neighborly, hardworking, connected, upbeat, and follow a can-do and will-do attitude. It was very obvious to us when we were working with the committee that that was true. So we start to build things like language. For example, mission, uplift all who cross our path with a welcoming environment, natural beauty, and countless ways to explore. And vision. Again, I won't read every piece of this, but these pieces of language are, are used to do a number of things. Anything from populating your content on your website for the About Us page to making a visitor's guide or filling out a grant application or social media when you're talking to people. So the pieces of language in here can be used a number of different ways, but the good news about having all of these things outlined, such as values, positioning families to thrive, celebrating, preserving our natural beauty, uplifting local businesses, inspiring economic vitality. It allows everybody in all departments to talk with the same language and to repeat the same messages and sort of be on point. So we're, we're all saying the same things and we sound consistent. So we continued through with a purpose, your positioning, and again, you've read all of these words. Your tone of voice, warm, family-oriented, understated, straightforward, authentic, inclusive, community-centric, uplifting, and neighborly. These are the things that when talking through the committee, we really realized represent your community and we'd like to come through in all marketing and communications efforts. Then we go through and we do tagline ideas. So these can be used to do a headline, sign off on a piece of copy. They would make a beautiful shareable on Instagram and what have you. Lots of different things to use where you need to. Make a Day of It being one that we do enjoy, and you'll see further on in there. But the idea that people should come to Trenton and make a day of it, or Trenton is where nature meets prosperity, or where nature meets community. So these are ways to speak about your community in a way that, that lets us know who you are and what you believe in and lets people join in with that. We have a whole elevator pitch, so when you are at the mayor's conference somewhere someday, you can talk about Trenton. You've got all the words. Your origin story, sort of this is great, what we call about page copy. So it sort of does a little bit of that work of getting your website and your communications up and running. And then we have the visual brand, which is always the fun part, too. Here we are with Trenton. Now, the thing we liked about this logo is that it is representational of a lot of things. Clearly, the river, you're seeing the, sort of the waves in there, the sort of two geographic areas of your town. It's a soft tea paired with some very nice sanskrit of typography, just a hint of a curve there and that R that sort of mimics what's happening in the logo. And so this is the basis of the visual brand, and you'll see how that plays out. Lots of different colors, the light, please excuse the monitor. Colors are never real in these kinds of things, but we've got a nice midnight blue, a teal, some other poppy colors, and I'll talk about how those work a little bit in a minute. And this is maybe how that all works together. Trenton, make a day of it. Just happy people, enjoying their time, doing what they do on a day. It makes you feel great about this kind of community. It makes you feel like you're welcome here. This is how you start to see it play out. From a shopping bag, everybody needs a bag to grab their groceries and their library books. It's just a rule. And how that icon starts to turn into a graphic over the course of and over the top of some pieces of communication. Here, you're seeing what some fun marketing materials might look like. I really like on the water bottle how we're growing with that, that icon that also sort of feels like trees or it feels directional. So it has a lot of meanings that could be interpreted about your community, which has great things to do. Let's get exploring Trenton, Michigan. How it might look in another digital environment. You see a pretend strategic plan here. City of Trenton, strategic plan. You're seeing the icon become waves because water is very important. And how it might work on, say, a travel guide where we've got a logo there at the top. We're using that graphic shape, and we're using that tagline, make a day of it, for example. And then this is actually one of my favorite pieces in a brand presentation. We like to look at the neighbors and see what they're up to. And we like to see what's, what's happening. And I want to take a moment to get a little technical here. We used to call this the fax test, but now I like to call it the embroidery test. You're putting on a quarter zip with your logo embroidered on it. You're looking at what's happening in, say, Woodhaven or Ecorus or Wyandotte. Complicated, difficult to read, a lot of little stuff. Trenton, clear, easy, understandable, very easy to replicate. Will look great on everything from your quarter zip to some signage at the door of the city to the marketing materials that we just saw. We also take a little bit of a look at color palettes and what's happening around town. But I think that the way Trenton has some nice presence there, clear, crisp, modern, refined and beautiful, works really well for today's modern needs for brands. And we're talking about everything, again, from that embroidery to digital, social media, to signage. So a brand really has to be a workhorse. And when it comes to workhorse, one of the jobs here was to make a system that would work. And so you're sort of seeing multiple choices. Trenton, just straight up there at the top, or Trenton, Michigan, if you want that descriptor. City of Trenton. You see what City of Trenton, Michigan looks like stacked. You see it in a seal format. You see it with Trail Town, Parks and Rec, Department of Public Service, and Downtown Development Authority. How a system works so that we can get those departments outlined. And this is not very exciting necessarily, but it's incredibly important to understand how does that work with one line of text under it, two or three lines of text, getting that alignment right, et cetera. So that's kind of the work we do to make sure that we're getting you a brand that works in a system and is flexible and can be used for all sorts of things. And that's that. So I told you I'd be fast, which I was, but that's kind of where we're at. And again, as Denise said, what we did was worked through the descriptors and words and hopes and dreams that came through the committee, articulated that into a pretty robust set of written language that can be used in all sorts of spaces. Again, this committee was fantastic. We showed two logo choices. They unanimously chose one right off the bat. We did some tweaking on color and typography weight to make sure that everybody's needs were heard, and they were efficient and great to work with. And so our job after tonight would be to make this into an entire system where all of the digital pieces and a brand manual are available to you that can then go to everyone from someone building your website to a T-shirt company because they're helping to print something to a signage company. So that brand manual will be available for everyone who needs to touch this brand so they can be consistent and ready to go. And that's what we've got.
Great. Well, thank you very much. First off, I mean, I think this is all super great. I appreciate all the time and effort you guys put in with, between, you know, DDA, council, the committee members that took part in it. I, I think it's all really cool. I personally have like no creative ability whatsoever, but I can look at something and say, oh, yeah, no, this looks great. And I think that, yes, it's so much more modern and sleek and everything like that. So we'll open up if anyone has any questions. And I'd just a special shout out, too, to both Nelson and Emily here, who I know took part in a lot of this. So thank you guys for all your work on that, too, for sure. But Councilman Perugia.
Yes, I unfortunately was not able to attend the last meeting, and I shared my concerns with John and Emily that I felt the color of the logo should be Trenton blue. I expressed that on the first meeting. And even though I wasn't at that last meeting, I got no correspondence from John or anybody else, so I'm a little disappointed with that. I love the verbiage. I love the font. I love the logo. I've talked to some Trenton residents, and they were pretty emphatic. They want the Trenton blue. So I, at this point, am not comfortable with this color until I see that Trenton blue. Maybe I still like this compared to the Trenton blue, but compared to the residents that I've talked with, they would like to have the Trenton blue. Now, I know initially in our one meeting, we didn't want to represent, like, the high school. That was obviously more of the logo framework, not necessarily color framework, even though if we could do something different. But at this point, I really would like to see what a Trenton blue would look like in this logo.
Sure, that's great feedback. Color palettes are quite flexible. We did between first presentation and second presentation, blew up that color quite a bit from what the first presentation had.
Right, the first one was green, yes.
Yeah, but the great thing about color palettes is they're almost infinite. Are you specifically saying that you want to use the same pantone match that the high school has?
Well, historically, Trenton is blue and gold, so whatever that blue palette is, that's what I would like to see. I can't tell you if it's zero, zero, six B, whatever it might be, but so. Outside of that, I have no issue with this at all. You guys did a great job. I just was a little disappointed that there was a breakdown in communication, either by myself or somebody else, but you guys did a good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Reuter, yes?
I just wanted to say that this was very well-written, and thank you all that participated. It's really wonderful. I really enjoyed reading it. In fact, I went back and I read it again because there are certain areas that I really enjoyed about things in regards to moving forward, but still keeping our traditions, which we love. And that's it. Really, thank you all for, for your great work. I think it's wonderful.
Cool. And then, Councilman Hardback?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for, for all the hard work. That was, it was actually a really fun process to be a part of. I thought after the first meeting, I had no idea how you were going to come up with anything. We were all over the place and had a lot of ideas. And everyone had, you know, a lot of ideas of what Trenton meant to them, but you brought it all together in this miraculous way. So I'm really proud of it, and I'm really excited to share it. So thank you so much for your work.
All right, anyone else? No, all right. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I didn't know we had, oh, okay. So we do have, and I guess for, just for. So we do have, and I guess for, just for clarity's sake, I guess I do have a question just to follow up with Councilman Perugia's there. So just, you will be able to do different things with the blues, I guess is, I'm probably not articulating this correctly. Okay, gotcha. So we'll, yeah.
Yeah, I can actually speak to process on that. So if that communication that you wanted Trenton blue is something that did not get to our door, we can absolutely go that route. So after this is approved, what we do is make all of the technical files. So we build, you'll have like 90 different files of all of the different pieces and parts. And part of that is working in color. So getting to Trenton blue, we'll have to do some research and figure out exactly what that blue is.
Right.
But getting there while we're integrating into final files is pretty straightforward.
Well, thank you.
So if that's something that's unanimous, you, you folks can let us know if that's, if that's the answer or if you're all going to arm wrestle, we're okay with that, too.
Cool. All right. Thank you guys. We appreciate it. So yes, we do have the, then the request here to approve the brand package with Redhead Studio for the city of Trenton with funding from the DDA account. And it sounds like they'll be able to have the 90-some files to go along with it. So if we could get a motion for that?
I'll support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion?
I just want to check with Commissioner, or Councilman Perugia. Are you amenable to that?
As long as we have an opportunity to do, if we decide that blue is, might be a better pathway, I'm not trying to pump the brakes on this at all. I'm, I'm just want to, you know, I'm listening to the residents. They've told me that and I would like to see it because it might look worse and it might look better. So if you, if your team is willing to do that, I'm willing to take a look and then all of us can discuss it when we see it and go from there.
Great, sounds good.
Cool. All right. So motion's supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Drive safe.
Have a good night.
You, too. All right. Next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to speak particularly on items on today's agenda? Now would be the time. We'll have another opportunity for public comment after. Anyone wishing to speak, we ask you to begin with your name and address. Direct any questions through me and please limit your comments to five minutes. I don't think we had anyone on Zoom for that. All right. Seeing none, we'll move right on along here. Next up, we have under appointments, asking for this body's approval for a reappointment of Joseph Oaks to the Civic Commission, Bruce Jax to the Police and Fire Pension Board, and OPEB Boards, Ken Gorno to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the appointment of Peter Paulus to the Historical Commission with terms ending February 1st, 2027.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cabo Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Perugia?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rosetta?
Abstain.
Motion carries, Mayor Rosetta.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Next, we have here from SEMCOG, our 2024 Annual Membership Due, asking for this body's approval in the amount of $2,786.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, we've got from department heads. First up from our city administrator, Rotary Club Agreement Renewal.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, before you have just a renewal with the Rotary Club Agreement. Basically, this is the same thing, just moving it forward another year where Rotary will donate $2,000 to our tree planting fund and they will get use of the Westfield Center in lieu of the room rental. So the motion to, motion to approve the renewal agreement with the Trenton Rotary Club allowing the donation of $2,000 to the city's tree fund in lieu of room rental for meetings at Westfield.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up from our controller, Ms. Cooper, resolution authorizing the issuance of installment purchase agreement.
So at the council meeting on December 18th, 2023, council approved the purchase of three ice rink compressors for the Kennedy Rec Center. Originally, the quote was through Huntington Bank at a rate of 6.05%, but we were able to get it through our local bank, First Merchants, at a rate of 5.25% for the 10-year term. So attached is the resolution that was prepared by Miller Canfield. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jill. All right. Late items here. I think, Madam Clerk, we had one come in.
Yes, we do have one late item. This is from All About Grace Homemade Boutique. And it is a request to hold a downtown Trenton Winter Fest on March 4th. And it would be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. They're looking to use the parking lot, the city parking lot at Elm and West Jefferson. And they're just looking for the approval.
And so this would still be pending administrative review and approval, correct?
Correct, yes. We just received this just minutes before the meeting tonight. So this would be pending administrative approval.
Is that the right date? I thought it was February.
Yeah, that's what threw us off, too, in the application.
Exactly.
It said March 4th. That's why we added it for the late item, so.
Right.
What's it going to be, Mike Beckman?
Yeah, it's, it's late.
See, it's right here. It's Saturday, February 3rd at 10:00 a.m. Yeah, that's what the...
So maybe she did a typo. She has March 4th and she meant to do February 3rd. Because we were surprised when we saw that.
Should have been 2/3, yeah.
Okay.
How about if we strike it and make it February 3rd?
Yeah, I'm looking at the information online that she posted, so.
So I guess this will be requesting a motion to approve pending administrative review and approval and probably a little more review.
A date clarification.
So yeah, probably some additional review from the applicant, too, so.
Correct. Is that the hockey showcase on the 2/3? Okay, then it's gonna, yeah, then that's the day.
I'll support it.
We need a motion first.
So moved. Sorry.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported to approve the event pending administrative review and approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. All right. For our disbursements and statements and reports, I will defer to this evening's Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the authorized disbursements for January 22nd, 2024 in the amount of $2,904,588.66.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
I'd also like to move to approve the financial summary for December 31st, 2023. I'd like to move to support the schedule of investments, cash on hand for December 31st, 2023, Civic Commission minutes, December 4th, 2023, Historical Commission minutes, December 11th, 2023, Library Governing Board minutes, November 1st, 2023, Recreation Commission minutes, October 17th, 2023, Fire Department Monthly Report, December 2023, and the Police Monthly Report, December 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. All right. Other council business now, just very briefly on my end. I want to let folks know that I have my state-of-the-city address on Monday, February 5th. That's at 11:30 a.m. at Westfield. The Rotary Club and Trenton Business Association always host it around lunchtime. So appreciate that in advance from them, but they'll have more information for that on their website or you can call City Hall here for anyone interested in attending. I believe they set up a stream for it online, too, for those that might not be able to make it in person, have it recorded and all that good stuff. But excited to have the opportunity to share all the things that we were able to accomplish over the last year, look a little ahead to 2024. And then yes, give a shout out to all the cool and creative and fun things that our city employees did for residents all over the course of the year. So other than that, go Lions, of course. So that is all I have this evening. And I'm not going to reboot that. So we'll get started now with Councilman Cabo Watten.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't have too much to say. You know, congratulations, Lions. Keep going blue. Other than that, just again, great appreciation to folks in DPS for all that they've done lately. And they've had a couple of tough weeks, plowing snow and taking care of main breaks and all that good stuff. Kevin, thank you to you and your team. And that goes really for all of our city employees as well. But, you know, there's times when we highlight others and it's Kevin's turn this time. So thank you very much for that. And other than that, that's really all I have to add tonight. Mr. Mayor, drive safe. Got some, possibly some ugly weather coming in again tonight. So Kevin's trucks might be out there again tonight.
Fun times. Cool. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Well, I definitely would like to say thank you for the DPW, for all the wonderful work that they did. They did an excellent job. I'd also like to thank the Cultural Commission for their first Martin Luther King event that they had at the theater in downtown Trenton. It was really great. Also Nelson and former Mayor Protem, Wendy Pate and I were at the destination downriver for the redevelopment of the five communities. So that was really great. It was actually packed. I think at one point I looked up and the room was completely packed. There were quite a few people that were there. So it was really great. And that's all I have for you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I also attended the Martin Luther King event from the Cultural Commission and thought it was great. It was really nice to see the turnout for the first one. And I know my students were begging for this, so congratulations, Trenton Public Schools. You'll be home tomorrow. I know you're all excited about that. And I'm also looking forward to, Debbie Dingell has a town hall this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Westfield Center. That's all I got.
Thank you for having to jot that one down. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Perugia, last but certainly not least.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take, take away some of Tim's thunder that the Invitational is on February 1st. Is that correct? Second, third, and no fourth. And it's a great event. I am going to be a gold judge, so you can throw tomatoes at me if you so choose. I'd like to thank all the city officials for the work they've done last year as well as the storm and the weather conditions. I appreciate everybody's effort. And last but not least, go Lions, as I was at the game in '91. So I'd like to see them do something constructive Sunday. So thank you, Mayor.
One day closer. Cool. Thank you very much, Councilman. All right. We'll go to the rest of our elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything this evening?
I'll just mention that the next regular council meeting will be on Monday, February 5th at 7:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our assessor, Ms. Burnett, do you have anything? Oh, looks like our volume might not be working. Nope. Still can't hear. Nope. Y'all good? Okay. Yeah, sounds good. All right. Figure it out eventually. All right. All good from the Assessor's Department. The Treasurer's Department, anything? Don't see Mike either. It's all right. So nothing from the Treasurer's Department. That's all right. Any of our department heads have anything to add?
There we go.
Eager for the showcase and more fun rink stuff, right?
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. At first, I want to say there is many events going on February 1st, 2nd, 3rd. But just please keep in mind, the showcase was the original event on that weekend from years and years ago. But there will be, Wayne County also has a winter wonderland taking part on Saturday at Elizabeth Park. The Winter Fest will be downtown. And there is the all Downriver Swim Meet that will be taking place at the high school, which will include all Downriver High Schools. So we will have all the swimmers from Downriver and we will have hundreds upon hundreds of hockey players across the street. So Trenton will be the place to be February 1st, 2nd, 3rd. So hope to see you all there. We are looking for many volunteers. The showcase will run February 1st through 3rd. There is a fee to get in. It is, I believe, $6 for individual game and $12 for weekend pass. Hope to see you there. If you're interested in volunteering, please contact our office. That's about it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Tim. We appreciate it. Best of luck out there. And yes, always there looking for volunteers. Anyone interested in helping out throughout the weekend, working as a gold judge, sitting in the penalty box, get ahold of our Parks and Rec部门. We'll get that figured out, too. All right. Nothing else from any other department heads. We'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, we ask you to begin with your name and address. Direct all questions through me and please limit your comments to five minutes. Go to anyone in person first, then those on the Zoom. Get hands up. All right. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment, 7:30, 3:00 p.m. All right. Take care and be safe out there.